We have Chief Cocker with us tonight, we're glad he's able to attend. They look for him, they look for him for many more. All right, we got a board here. Little Jean, you may know more about this than I do. It's from the Department of Art, Cast and History for what all maintained the beauty of the city. He's got one of the weirdestes on here that I want to be, it's your weapon to look at it. Lynn, you may want to take a picture.
Sure.
Right now. Okay, first on the agenda is the recent 1024 Barstool from R2 to R4. Anybody here concerned with that? You want to read something, right?
Yes.
Okay. But anybody here to object to it? No? If not, what's the will? I think it was approved, it was only for me, right? I think most of property are very now. All right, what's the will? Got a most of my data, I have second, second by Kevin Dale. Any questions or discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Any most curious? Okay, we're gonna move to personal appearance, and now Bob Barker. Where'd you go? Oh, there you are. I saw him coming, yeah.
Yes, sir, Mayor Board, good evening. I'm seeing now, I got a time limit, I hope I didn't cause the time limit to five minutes. But all I want to do is bring you an update. We are, we are very close to presenting the advisory group in the city with a draft of New Albany next. This is a proof copy we're working through now. Of course, all this is electronic, but this is, this is a printed version we're working on. We anticipate having that draft, I'm hoping, this week. The latest next, and then we'll begin a review process, and that will, that will move the planned part of it forward. It'll have to ultimately be before you for adoption. Go before your zoning board for review, and we want to have a meeting with our advisory committee for their review and some prioritization and some other things. I just want to continue to emphasize how impressed our team is with New Albany, the kinds of things you've got going, the potential the community has, the assets, see it pop up, its presence in social media. So, just express that again. Now, where we're going, once we get a plan adopted, one of the, one of, not the only thing, but one of the key things we're aiming at is rewriting your development code. And we've already begun some conversations with Eric, and we'll, we'll continue to move that on. We're just having a conversation with, I thought Mr. Haynes was gonna speak before me, but, speak before me, but we were talking about zoning matters related to some property he represents, and all those discussions were good. So, we think that when we get into rewriting your code, it will be, it will move the city from, from 1980s kinds of ways of looking at things to current times, current practice, and ultimately help the development of the city, help the economic prospects, and all the things that you're, you're working to achieve, from tourism to preservation to new neighborhoods, all the way around. So, I could ramble on, I don't have any specific things for you, I just wanted you to know. We're out here, we're moving towards the end of this particular phase, and you'll, you'll be seeing a little more of us in the next month, six months.
Getting close, Lynn.
Yes, sir. Any questions or any concerns?
One of the questions I've got, I know John, if you see, he probably speak to, I know, on his team last month, and we had talked about trying to have something in place possibly tonight, or some information from you about the property down behind the bank off of Poplar.
Yes, sir.
Have y'all talked, have you talked with John? What's established as letters, you know?
We, we did talk, we had a meeting this evening and discussed it. And I actually, at the mayor's request, drafted, went ahead and drafted what we consider to be the district that would apply to that area, as recommended out of this document right here. So, that's drafted up. We reviewed it, I reviewed it with Mr. Haynes, and explained to him the concept that was in operation with the, with the preface, that none of it had been approved, and, you know, it hadn't been vetted and talked about and so forth. But if it rolled in the direction it seemed to be going, I explained to him what that meant. And he said, "You helped me out," but he seemed to be satisfied with it. He, he liked the direction it was headed. Is that a specific enough answer?
I just want to sort of get that thing.
Yes, sir.
Another question?
Thank y'all very much.
We got a minute left? Can I keep going or something?
Thank you.
You wanna sing a song? Sing a song?
You make that news.
Okay, let's move to the department.
I think most of this, it needs pretty much all routine. Kind of stuff we've been doing, we're getting money back from Free Rivers on the first item, items two, three, four, and five. We're paying for, let's see, two and three, we're paying for the gas project in Marshall County. Four and five are for the wastewater project here in town. The sixth one is the water project out east to Albany. Union County actually got the grant, they're, they're the owner. We have to, this is some of our management, we have to pay them. And number seven is a change order to an existing contract, we have a bus, bus code. It does not offer the dollar amount of contract, we're just adding some work unit items that he needs in order to complete the work out there.
Can I ask a question about the wastewater treatment? Do we have a target date? I had some people asking about, you know, when without the guidelines.
Yes, we're, we, the bids for the actual construction of the plant, we got those in last week, and we're still evaluating those. And we'll, I'll be talking with you all about that in the next week. And by the next board meeting, we should have, we should be ready to award that bid. Once we get the bid awarded, they're thinking probably eighteen months, from, you know, from the time they, they might take another month to get started. Eighteen to twenty months from when we award the contract.
And on that same note, on the substation, any date, projected date on the other?
I, I hope to have that project here in January for us to get that approved. Once we get that approved, that'll probably take, that'll probably take about a year on the substation, I would guess.
Okay, and you think that'll help a lot with power outages downtown?
It, it will, that, that, and there's a couple of circuits we want to improve. Basically, we'll start feeding downtown from Butler instead of the high school, and it will definitely improve reliability downtown.
Okay, great.
All right, you need these?
Can we approve all of these and waters right?
Yeah, yeah, I'll say that's a clear. Most of my, I need, I have a second. Second, we'll need a question or discussion. All in favor?
Okay.
Any opposed? Any most curious? Thank you, sir. Committee of the Board.
Just some reminders that were not on my report. This Thursday, the Mississippi Urban Forestry Commission will be having their annual conference at Magnolia Room in the Sine. The C D will be receiving her award, so all of you are invited to attend lunch. She, they have invited us for that. The Sunday is our holiday open house downtown, one to five. And then November the 21st will be the Community Christmas Tree Lighting. This year, we're partnering with the Sine, Christmas on Bank Hill will become a variety show, have children's activities, and just a lot of variety, all free to the public. And, what am I missing?
You got a date on Christmas parade.
And the Christmas parade, December the 2nd. And the theme of that parade is Let It Snow. And we're already getting applicants for that, too. It's a $10 fee, and everything collected goes to the Gazette for sharing Christmas.
What time is that?
The parade.
Six o'clock, it's almost, yeah, six o'clock.
About the launch, is it 11:30?
I think she said 12, let me, I'll send y'all an email on that.
Oh, question. So, can you just explain to us a little bit about where we are on CLG, on certified level government?
Well, the Department of Parks and Park Service has approved us, so now, just moving forward, the commission will meet and start the decline properties that need to be submitted to the State Department for approval for, you know, historic sites, national designations, and stuff like that.
Okay, are there already sites that, is there like a committee that decides where the sites are, or how, or that?
You decide through that committee, it's presented to you guys, and then a certificate of approvability is, is submitted to the state, and then it grows from there.
Okay, and then you can apply for grants and that kind of?
Yes, and so, you know, of course, the two hotspots are the police station and the O jail.
Right.
And via Ford, it's lots of people want that at it as well.
That's the one I was wondering about, okay. And one more question, just a real quick question to Tracy on playgrounds and park, the playground.
Well, we have until May of 2020 to actually fulfill that.
Okay.
We have done a few, we've done the, when our interns were here for our partner, we did do that one financial leadership at the Boys and Girls Club, which fell under that grant, because we said we would do leadership activities. We did Youth Planning Day with Michelle, John Stone came in, kind of what we did in our committee meetings for the planning. We did it with some youth at the Boys and Girls Club. And then, was it last week, two weeks ago, we had the high school, a leadership group of students come down and meet several business owners. So, we've already implemented three of those activities. And then I've got emails and a couple of phone calls out to three different playground equipment companies, hoping one of them will actually come out and give us, like, what their thoughts of that space really could have. And again, we're trying to hold off on that just until our planning's kind of done, so we know what else we want to put there, and not rush and have something concreted in, and then move it all again. So, yeah, so we're, like I said, we've got till May of 2020 to implement the equipment, and Toyota will give you an extension on that if needed, so we're good.
And I will say, three of the students through that activity downtown were offered jobs.
We have three high schoolers that, yeah, got jobs.
Three jobs.
From that day.
Thank you.
Police car, chief. Mr. Mayor, we have, one of our officers has been deployed, he's on days off right now, preparation for that. He's ordered, I think he's gonna be deployed January, and will be up to deployment on four, up to 400 days. So, once again, we've done it a few times, I'm asking for a conditional hire, for one of our part-time guys. Shane Tillery, he's been with us a couple of months now, part-time, worked that well. And this will be a conditional hire, in times past, I think, where I can ask him, we got a form, a sign?
Just acknowledgement, yes.
Yeah, acknowledgement. That's what I'm asking the board, just to cover our officer that is being deployed.
I got most of my data, second by Keith, any other questions, no questions? All in favor? Any opposed?
Only other thing, Mr. Mayor, just an update, we did make an arrest in the vandalism of Shattuckdale Park, did make an arrest in that. And we have attached the arrestation of damage to the case.
Yes, sir. Okay, pardon, Rick.
I've got three quotes for three of the things that was approved on the budget. One of them is from Woods Construction about the concession stand, Coach Peach, which has been vandalized since, since that come out, and broke some windows out, so we need to act on that pretty quick to get that, all that fixed. But that was going to be a part of the process anyway, so.
What's your opinion?
Mr. Woods is $8,450 to do what we want to do, and then the other one is $9,450.
Do you recommend lowest speed?
Lowest speed.
Who's over from?
Timothy Carter from Ball, Mississippi. The other thing is a...
Which one is that, which concession stand?
Coach Peach.
All right, is that all, thank you.
So, that, that particular, yeah. All right, the second one is the painting for the concession stand, and some of the walls, and some of that, all basically given as sports place facelift. I got two quotes. Jerry Foster come in at $13,765, and Mr. Step come in at $14,000. You mean the lowest?
Seven fifty-five.
Thirteen seven one. Six seven sixty-five.
So, you're gonna recommend lowest speed or eight?
Yes.
All right.
And then the fixing Ivy Fence, Tupelo was $10,779, and Memphis Fence Company was $13,980.
Do you think Ivy was what?
Ivy was $10,779.
So, what's that?
It was $13,998.
So, you recommend the lowest speed or?
I mean, lowest on that one also.
Mr. Mayor, is that from all vandalism?
The fence was from the?
The fence is just improvement on issues of the usage.
Over the years.
Over the years, some of the fences have not been replaced since the sports place on some of the fields.
Do you want reports on who that was?
I, I don't know, the police report on that one.
That's the only one we've had out there.
Recently, yes, in a while.
Okay, all of them is all at once?
I'm okay with it, I'll make a mention.
Second by Kevin Dale, any other questions, no discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Any most curious? All right, what you got?
That's it.
You got that Bob Skid steer?
Am I supposed to bring that up?
Yeah.
Okay.
I will.
All right, it was in the budget, I think, that Johnny Payton and myself would buy a skid steer and share it and get some attachments. And I've got a quote from Williams Equipment in Tupelo for a skid steer. It's $44,470, sixty-eight cents. And then the other quote is Chickasaw Equipment, and it's $48,500. So, that's just for the steer.
There's a Bobcat that owns?
Skid steer, right, Bobcat brand.
Yeah. They're forty-four.
Forty-four, four seventeen, sixty-eight. That's, that's just with a bucket. That's not, you know, other attachment except the bucket.
Did you put that honey in the tree department for skid steers? We did, but it's really, John's gonna bring it up. Johnny, didn't you purchase some attachments last month, or have you got them ordered?
We got one. We got, we had money in the iPhone budget to get a raffler to go on it. And that's something we had, actually stopped, so that's the piece we got. And then we ordered forks out of the new budget. But other than that, that's basically, I didn't, hadn't got the money in the budget to do any of the attachments. I know there's some other attachments that we need.
One is the?
That, that pointer that Johnny can really use to do on the streets. And I got, I got a quote on the, it's a... I'm not really familiar with that, that's from Johnny's department. $10,766 for that one particular attachment. That would tear up the street, I understand it's supposed to rip up the street, and you'll make it.
Mr. Brand?
Round it, round up the street so you can patch it, you know, fix it back a lot, you know, instead of having to. I, I got, I got another quote from Chickasaw, his is a coal pointer.
Twenty-four four.
Twenty-four thousand four hundred dollars.
With both same piece of wood? One was two foot and one was thirty inch.
Not compared.
Obviously, the Chickasaw is about a twenty-four. But it's over twice as much.
I got, I got a quote on a bunch of attachments as far as that goes, I mean, some of the stuff.
We're not asking for any patents.
I know, I know, but I know that's one that Johnny got. We just need to be sure it's a high flow pump and to work with all those, it's gonna make big attachments. Yeah, it's, it's supposed, all these, from what I understand, this, this would come from the Bobcat, the Williams, and it attached. And even the other ones, Bobcat makes the attachments for the boat, and they buy it from them. That's the reason they're eject prices, that's, that's what I was told. Now, I'm, like I said, I'm, I'm going blind here on some of this, because I don't, I don't know that. The pointers.
Now, let's go back to the Bobcat skid steer sale with the bucket. The boat, the Bobcat brand? No, the other one.
Covada has their own brand on the skid steer, but the attachments, I guess it's sort of like division, sort of, Bobcat makes them, and they just, you know.
Yeah, the high flow, the skid steer is, so we gotta make sure, we're gonna have the boat attachment, it's booked up with the Bobcat.
But all these attachments from Bobcat, any attachment is much cheaper.
Yeah, bottom plate is that broom, sweep all streets, trade over the parking lot.
Well, just the raffler, if we had the skid steer, we could, Johnny and I both could, we used to have the storm. With the skid steer, the attachment, we would have been really handy. That'd be nice, I'm sure, from time to time.
Except the low, the wind. I've got most acceptable, quote from Williams Equipment on the Bobcat for forty-four four. I have a second. Second, you have a? Both same, both, same quote?
Compared.
Yeah, and we can have a candidate? Yeah. Who knows about the Bobcat? Bobcat?
A little bit.
I'm glad you, you're good.
Are they, they're a track machine?
Yeah, track.
Yeah, they got track.
They both have high flow pieces of cord.
No, it's written, my shit already. That's a really approach, you know, it just gets you to know awful lot of them, awful lot.
There's loads that come in really.
Well, with all the attachments, if you agree with all the attachments, kind of those things, there's, there's a lot you can do with that piece of cord, a lot.
I've got most of my second, any other discussion? It's not all in favor? I'm lowest speed. Any opposed? Any most curious? All right, thank you. All right, Parker. Do you need anything? Now, we had that on the Freedom Park Commission. First that Bobcat, doesn't make that, but that's a wins win. Bill, this, thank you. Thank you.
I emailed y'all the monthly report. At the Zonal meeting, we had a request from Byron Army on the 505 Hill Crest Cove to split an oversized lot into two lots, and asked for a conditional permit and use to build a duplex on a rear yacht lot, and it was approved. And on the code enforcement side, I'd like to set a hearing for the next meeting, for 500, 502 Clark to clean the property and re-plant.
I think it's December the third, I don't know. Okay. All right, need most of set a period, December the third, I'm blocking. Most by Angus, second by Kevin Dale. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Any most curious? That's all, again, there. Thank you. All right, from, from I to A to O. Okay, we can do it as a consent agenda, unless somebody wants to pull one of these out of that to discuss it, we can approve them all at once. And this claims document, minutes. The agreement between the state pass laws, you can, if you get the social security number, you can attach, or find most of the police to the state. Check, make a refund. To agree with that. Anything else, okay?
He asked a question, is Johnny refusing himself?
Yeah, he is on the claims document, because he's a son of worship.
So, does, he doesn't want to refuse himself on everything, does he?
He's, he's already looked at it.
Oh, he did? All right. So, we want to pray, which letters, Tim?
A to O. Would be, I seen it, I mean, A to K.
Well, D is not anything, right? D is not anything.
Next month, we'll have it broken out on a consent agenda. I think we're supposed to do it before the meeting starts, through the consent.
What's the building regulations?
That is, so they will not be able to use a quarter of the building as a permanent business anymore. And it is so they would have to ask for a conditional permit and use to build a metal building house. And that's, I guess that's what you're trying to say.
And all you're doing right now is asking them to use the existing rights for that, considering?
You guys, much police officer?
Yeah.
Thank y'all, that's the police.
Eventually. Yeah.
I'm wondering about that, so we can include that in it, too?
Yeah, basically after hours to get the, to tell the board, basically after hours, the clerks there make the file, and then after five p.m., there's the one that has to be issued, and that date has to be sworn to, and they're deputized by the, by the court to do this, as deputy clerks.
Any other questions? All right, it's mine, most approved, second by Keith, most by Keith, and second by William. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Any most curious? All right. Nothing else? Yeah, Mamie, you got one?
I just have one thing that, we're a little late here, here often, but Stephanie Gregg and I have, our three members from the community to choose from SA, this is the first year that we've had, I think we had thirty-something, I can't remember the exact number, but a lot of applicants. Fourteen did not make it, but twenty did. And it's not, I mean, they were wonderful applicants, but we had nothing to do with it, which I'm really grateful for. We were blind judging, and nobody knew who the names were, nobody knew anything much, so we're very thankful. names were, nobody who knew anything was, so we're very thankful, um, to our secret judges that we did. Um, so anyway, they'll be announcing, we'll be, um, Stephanie Gregg will be getting in touch with different community members like we did last year, um, and Billie Jean helped and Tracy helped a lot with putting them in touch with different people and some of their projects got, like the bikes and there are several things that were very helpful and so, I'm, it's just getting a little late start, but they're about to get, go in and they'll come to our meeting and they'll be talking to us and just, that's going well. This is the third year, so.
Great. Any others discussion? Questions? All in favor?
No.
Any opposed? And most curious. Uh, if anybody got anything else, we have most of the, most of the adjournments, if we're, if we're ready to go. And most by Amy, the house second by Kevin Dale. Any other questions?
Quickest one's a topic.